All right, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Noting that it was. Sorry. Notice of this meeting isn't properly posted. A media representative notified in the organs of the Wisconsin statute. Section nineteen point eight four one D. All right. Revisions and approval of the agenda tonight?
I said two revisions of the agenda. In the new business section of our personnel, it should be two and not three items. Some of you have edited agendas, but the posted one had two, not three. And then in the meeting opening section, one point oh four, special meeting superintendent search. Just, I just didn't drag it down to the meeting section, it's just a typo. So there again, if you've got an agenda tonight, it's probably right, but anything else posted is different.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, the revisions? And anything on the two hundred and fifty? So move.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moving on to community, the community and staff participation. Now we've already with. Down. Yep. You guys wanna introduce that?
Sure. Sure, so um.
Sure.
Should stand up.
Sure. Okay. With educator effectiveness. One component that we have this year that went in was a survey that went out to like a basically a client survey. At the middle school, they have decided to, well, they followed the more traditional route of surveying the students.
Right, so all of our teachers as a part of the new educator effectiveness model that we're on, this is a requirement, a required component. So all of our teachers at BMS surveyed students and really, it could be anything that they wanted. So how, how is class going for you? You know, it could have been something super specific. Ultimately to gauge feedback from students on what we can be doing better as teachers to improve our practice, make class more enjoyable and impactful.
And then thinking on how to make the surveys very relevant. At the elementary, we had chose to survey the families. So and we have examples of some of the surveys that were handed out here and distributed. They were done at the beginning of the year and then a secondary survey as well. The surveys didn't necessarily have to be connected, they could. If you asked something and changed practice and you wanted to follow up on how that change was. But if they elicited feedback at the beginning and everything was good, then they went to kind of the next thing that they want to find out from their constituents or students or parents. So.
How you wanna click through the next slide, please? Thank you. So this is something that we have to do as administrators as well. And again, we can pick the client that we want to use. So we could survey parents, we can survey students, we can survey our teachers, we can survey the community. I personally chose to survey teachers this year and what I can be doing to better support them.
And the same, same here as well. Also, within the surveys, some decided to work as a team at the grade levels. If they're overarching things for the elementary, some of those surveys were the same. If somebody had it for their own professional growth that they wanted to look at.
Are required to provide us with a reflection on what they got out of their survey. That specific piece itself is not evaluative. So we are not, as the administration, looking at the, even the questions on the survey unless they choose to share those with us or even direct responses from students. So it's more, really more, you know, in terms of like, I think it's for teachers to learn about their practice and to be able to do so in a, in a way that's not scary and also really practical and informative.
And the same thing with the elementary. Not, not knowing exactly because if it's reflecting on your practice and where you can get better, if that's also held as a value tip tool, it's almost counterproductive. So if they're going to really dive in and see where can I get better and elicit that feedback, I think that's a little unfair to say, you tell us where you want to grow the most and then we're going to evaluate you on the struggle, the weakest point that you show us. We have, for my building, a third grade teacher, Christina Nast, is here to share hers.
And then we have Kim Garrett, art teacher at BMS, a teacher extraordinary. And then Marielle and Campag, who first teaches science for us, health, as well as does some intervention with our great students for math.
So will we, you wanna click to the next one? All right, you can click. All right, Kim.
Hi, I, I love doing these surveys. I really enjoy reading what the students have to say. I've always done a reflection, but this year with the educator effectiveness model, I feel like it's really allowed me to more like fine tune what questions I'm asking and really have more sort of a purpose behind the surveys where before it was really just want. I, I mean, I had a purpose before, I wanted to hear what the students thought about the class, but I feel like this really kind of honed me in on more specific skills. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read what I have here. So first semester, I surveyed my seventh and eighth grade three D art class. And then I did mid-year with seventh and eighth grade photography class because I don't have the same groups of kids throughout the year. The surveys were similar. In the first survey, the questions that I asked were very similar to what's here. I just kind of fine tuned them a little bit more on the second survey. So my questions were, are the learning goals for assignments clear? Do you feel you get the help and instruction you need from the teacher in this class? What is your favorite part of this class? And what suggestions do you have for improving this class? I feel like surveying my students allows me to see where I can improve as a teacher. I think student input matters and it's interesting to see the types of responses I get. I like reading what students have to say, especially in response to the last two questions where students give more than a yes or no answer. I think students are more engaged in the learning process and more invested in their creative work when they have choice and a say in the art room. And I think these surveys help students feel empowered and heard while helping me determine how I can be a more effective educator. So some of the responses I get are things like, you know, like we wanna go outside more and take more photo walks and take more pictures outside. I, I was very happy that, you know, they said yes, the learning goals for assignments are clear. So they said yes, we feel like we get the help and instruction you need. So it's just a nice way for students to kind of let me know what they think of the class and what they think of me. And they're more, I think, honest when it's written than if I were to just like ask them, you know, right to their face though. Yeah, so.
That's all for me. All right, I think we have Marielle and Nast.
Yeah, I got a couple of things going on there. Those polite booth and have some links so that you can actually take a look at what the questions in the survey look like. I am really wanting to feed off of Kim and the, you know, any attention to be able to really glean a perception of my classes. I surveyed three sections of science and those, in those sections, the first survey, if we could. Helen, could you click on that link for me? There we go. That's, that's what a Google form survey, let us do this look like. This one was very, in the beginning of the year, very extensive. And as we scroll down, you can see that there's different sections. It was a lot for me to really look at and take in as a, as an educator, but I did glean some ideas about communication, whether kids felt safe in class, their emotional realities, things about me, and then their learning preferences and if they felt like I was clear enough. So it was a lot. And so the second survey, I decided that I was going to revamp. So this one focused on a wide variety of questions, like ranging from social, emotional growth and safety to their comfort levels. And then it also focused on my instructional practice and how well I was serving their needs. So then survey two, I revamped it and it focused on asking about grades and missing work and concerns about the completion. And one of the things I really enjoyed when I was teaching fifth grade personalized learning was the amount of time that I spent with interviewing students individually to see where they were at, how they were doing. And so I decided that I was gonna bring that back into my practice. So with this survey, I had specific checkboxes instead of ratings and they seemed to be able to relate to that. And I had asked them later if they thought that that was, you know, a good list of things to choose from and they, they agreed and. Then I also included some small goal setting choices to help them do better. I asked specific questions about what I could do to help and make science more interesting. And I met with each student then individually to discuss their needs and also to evaluate themselves on their science interactive notebook, which is a pretty weighty part of their grade. That's where all their labs and their nodes are and their, the other parts of my SLO are reflected in there too. And then I also advised them on their short-term goal setting. And so we click out of that. And the math person in me really loves data. So this one, one of the questions was, do you have missing assignments? And you can see that there was a good portion of this particular class that said no. But then there were still too many that did. And that is a concern for us as they are graduating students and trying to overcome our obstacles and habits that we have formed through the pandemic. So I thought it was interesting that in asking the next questions about, you know, what it is that I, that they need or they need to do better at, that fifty-three percent of the entire eighth grade said that they needed more sleep. So that gives me a real inclination, like at eight o'clock in the morning when I'm trying to teach science, just, you know, how they're responding. Seventy-five percent of the eighth grade class that they needed to use work time better and to get work completed on time. So there's still a hefty commitment and they understand that that, that is, has to be a priority. Twenty-five percent said that they need to not give in to skipping school for things other than true illness and they feel they need to be at school and understand that it's linked to their success. So I was checking to see if that was something that is really, truly there. It's, it's a low, it's a low number and I think that worries me. How, how solid all of that is, I'm not sure. But I do know that our absences very much contribute to that missing work part. As far as things that I could do better for them, they wanted more experiments. That they generally said that they were happy in class and they were enjoying science. And I, I really was happy to hear that, that, you know, that it is a class. I also did, in those conferences, express that in the data, like what subject levels they were struggling in and offered myself again, especially since being part of academic lab at the time, to be, you know, helping them with those things as well, if maybe. So I felt that this second survey was more useful to me than the first survey and eye-opening as far as what their needs. I felt that there's been growth in their social, emotional issues and getting along and just some things that we saw early in the year has sort of dissipated and things seem to be more smoother. So I think these surveys are a wonderful addition to the.
Okay. My name's Christina Nast, I'm in third grade with Lauren Scalucki. So we decided to do like a parent survey for all of our third grade students. So the third grade team decided to survey our classroom parents to gain insight in how we can support them at home. Third grade is a big year for students at math. They're introduced to multiplication and division for the first time, so the standard is that number. But it's hopefully multiplying one hundred using strategies such as the relationship between multiplication and division. We knew that this would be better accomplished with a parent partnership and practice at home. So at both the beginning of the year and mid-year, we conducted the same survey, but we had much better results in person because we conduct our first survey during conferences. So in both classes, we had ninety-five percent participation, only missing one parent in both classes. So this survey first and foremost was able to open the lines of communication through those conversations. Me specifically, I was able to give parents tools. Some parents asked for flashcards, so we made sure they had flashcards. Others asked for not flashcards, things that didn't look like homework or practice. So we developed some games, we printed out some different tools and different strategies to practice at home. Secondly, parents, I don't, I'm not a huge advocate for homework. I just want kids to read a weekly homework packet that always had math worksheets in it after we cost them my parents. Some of those parents requested that I would look over the homework, make sure that they were on track. We also developed some, some families, when they get their math tests or assessments back, they review them, they make corrections and then they send it back in for me to look at as well. So again, it was kind of individual per family case. But our survey was just really basic. How do you practice math skills at home with your child? What math resources do you have at home? And then what can I do to help foster math practice at home? So that was my.
Thank you.
I can imagine getting answers like from your students can be quite scary for the, at least for the middle to, middle school too. Sometimes kids.
I'd be like.
Yeah. But it sounds like the, the, the surveys were definitely beneficial to both of you or all, or all three of you actually. I think it's brilliant to do it during parent-teacher practice because if you send it home.
True, yeah.
You never know if you're gonna get it back.
We, and that's, I didn't include that because it was kind of mortifying. But we thought, our second survey, we were creeping up on those spring conferences where we only get to meet with certain families. So Lauren and I just printed our questions because we had them saved and we sent them home on little like quarter sheets. And I think I got two back, she said she got seven back. So definitely not data that was helpful. But I think, like you said, I think for us, especially talking to parents and initiating those conversations and then the strategies we put in place for the families that needed it, we didn't, we did the secondary survey, but I don't even think it would have mattered because we're already still working with those families, so.
Doing, doing this for like what it was meant for, would, would this be something that you guys would take and just do on your own to help benefit you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we've been, and some of us have been doing it. You know, right along, it's just been part of your practice. But I think that this has made us focus in on the outcomes. You know, because it, it gives us our goal setting, you know, throughout the year. So some of the answers to my first survey, I chucked because it was like, okay, this isn't valuable, but this part is, so I'm gonna build off of that. And that's why I thought I, I think that I've seen better communication skills, better collaboration going on in the classroom because I was more sensitive to like what I knew. And yeah, so I think it's part of being a reflective teacher as a whole. And that, that is absolutely a requirement.
Yeah. And I love that this is something that models growing mindset for our students as well. You know, like I'm gonna give you this survey because I'm always looking to get better. And, you know, that gives them the green lights, maybe start admitting that they're not perfect with everything too and striving to improve, so.
Now, we did have an opportunity a couple of years back when we were working with student group for administrators to give out surveys. Now, we didn't have the luxury of creating questions that we were looking for. But this, the feedback that I know I got as an administrator, I, I believe I went through the different phases of mourning. But as you get it back, it's, it's so powerful because it's, it's true, authentic feedback and then following up with the staff and they know that it was anonymous when they came in unless they signed their name in a comment box. But to come back and own my own data and say, this is about growth? This is, so there's a lot of tough questions that are on here. And it, it really, I don't know if you're familiar with mirrors and windows, but I know you know what they are. But, but looking in the mirror is so important when you're looking for growth in that reflection. So it, it's a great opportunity that the staff that has been here for a while has seen their administrator go through at that time. And now their first year of doing it with educator effectiveness, I only anticipate that it's gonna give more and more useful, powerful as a tool. And also separating it from that evaluation, even though it's a part of educator effectiveness, that's how you get truly reflective, reflective practice.
Well, I think that giving both the students and the staff a chance to be heard makes them feel like they are being heard, like what they're saying matters, I think is important as well.
Marielle, I liked one of your questions, like do you, I don't know what the worry was, but like do you have someone you can talk to here? Because not everyone is going to be comfortable speaking to you or notoriety, like that they can think about, like say if I have a problem, who can I go to? So that they do know there's someone here who will help them.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything from the community? Well, all right. Moving on then. And we need to make a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on three twenty-one and our work session on four thirteen. Oh, in the monthly financials. So move.
Second.
Any questions are coming? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then on to new business.
The first item under new business is to, I'm looking for approval to accept the retirement of Randy Lewis.
Can I get a motion to approve for the approval of Randy Lewis's retirement?
With regret. Much appreciated in all of his work throughout all the years. Much appreciated his professionalism and his ability to get along with everyone. And he will be missed.
Go ahead.
All, any questions are coming? And Randy, I piggyback on Karen, Randy will be missed. Can I get? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Come on, come to the bottom.
Okay. All right, then on to personnel.
Okay, two items under personnel. The first is approval for the hiring of Kathleen Goldberg as a new middle school administrative assistant. Kathleen comes to us with some experience in the medical field, quite a bit of experience as a front desk in a small doctor's office, looking to kind of switch into the school venue. And she will start with us on May second. Carrie will be doing the training.
And Carrie will go down in May second.
We're going to do a gentle transition over the course of that week.
All right. Can I get approval for Katherine Goldberg? So move. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, that's why I thought before.
I heard her on.
No, I'm missing.
And then the second item is approval for the resignation, kindergarten teacher Lynn Wren. Lynn has decided to do some traveling and fun things with her husband and family. And it's been that twenty-five years, it's a, it's a twenty-five year marker this spring, so it's a good time.
Also, with much appreciation for her years of service. When she started, we were both in the basement together. Like next door to each other. And there was one student that she had with a very big challenge for her and he just, she just picked up her whole entire class and left the room because this child was ripping everything apart. And she really handled it with aplomb and I have respect for her ever since. So with much regret.
Can I get a second?
Yeah. Second.
Any questions or comments? And thank, thank, she will be missed.
I'll pass it along.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then moving on to our director of people services counter. So I'm looking for the approval to move Kylie Warner into the director of people services role. Kylie's been with us for the last three, four years in as our early childhood special ed person. And she's worked with us through the leadership group, so she's done some things. She's looking to get her certification for that degree, but is, is more than capable of doing more.
Can I get a motion made to move Kylie Warner into that director of people services role? So move.
Go ahead.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and now I'm gonna just go back to the screen for the safe return for to school plan. This is our mandated plan for the, for the state of Wisconsin about our COVID safety practices. And we need to update this as we make changes and then it's posted on our website. I will tell you that some of the changes that you'll hear about today are new things and some of the changes are just an updated of practice wording that we've made, actually made the changes in practices earlier and are just updating today. So the first thing, description on maintaining the safety for all students in that category so that we'll begin our school year with a five-day week, face-to-face instructional model and adhere to the following health protocols. So for the duration of the year, we've been limiting volunteers and visitors for activity as well as for families to be able to take place and take part in person in some of our end-of-the-year activities that happen within our building. In the, the next section, regardless of the mode for instruction, this talks about the fact that we're not only offering the virtual instruction for the students in grade six to eight for our power program, but we also are working with a handful of families, Helen is leading on that, that are in the K five that because of some extra situations are virtual. We'll be resetting that at the end of this school year. So those families are all well, well aware that that'll be a change. So I just put that, that language, the language in that that'll be ending at the end of the school year. For the next section about supports for mental health, I just put in the language that we've increased the school psychologist time to a hundred percent beginning next year. This is out of those extra three dollars that the board has talked about earlier. The universal incorrect wearing of masks. So I just updated the language. This is one of those things where we've actually changed our practice quite a while ago, but put the updated, following the guidance of the local health organizations that moved to mask wearing being optional in the spring of twenty-two. And then the contact tracing, this next section just outlines the fact that we discontinued our contact tracing during the winter. We are continuing not to contact trace. We're gonna maintain the COVID dashboards through the end of this school year and we'll continue to notify families when there's a positive COVID case in their child's grade level or classroom, depending on their grade. We'll just continue that through the rest of the school year and, and beyond if the situation warrants it. So I'm just looking for approval of the adjustments in that plan and then we will repost the additive version of that tomorrow.
Can I get approval to make the adjustments to the safe return school plan?
Oh, move.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And moving on to our tax action prepayment portion of the taxable GO refunding bond of four one of twenty twenty-one.
So this is the, the motion that, that works through that prepayment of debt with those funds that are, that are overleveled. We can't use those funds for anything but debt prepayment. This is the board action that designates those funds for the debt.
Kind of wound your head, so I wasn't sure.
Katie's gonna, Katie's gonna read the actual motion language and then ask for an E B so move.
Motion to approve the prepayment of four hundred and forty thousand portion of the twenty thirty-five installment payment and five hundred and sixty-seven thousand of the twenty thirty-six installment payment of the district's taxable GO refunding bond dated four twenty-one twenty-one on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, with the funds of the district on hand. Can I get a motion? So move. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is the approval for the professional staff contract. By statute, we need to get our teachers, they're contracted by May fifteenth. The board doesn't need again until after the fifteenth, so we approve them now and hand them out next one.
Can I get a motion to get the professional staff contracts out?
Ooh.
Second. Any questions or comments? Are they linked somewhere? Like the, I'm in the board book like to look at the professional.
The whole, I have.
Oh, okay. Is there a way that we can see those, like before making a motion and approving them?
We can pause the meeting and you can look at them.
I mean, and just in the, I mean, I, I struggle approving things if I don't know what I'm approving.
Sure, sure. Well, probably some backup information would be helpful. So the board, the board approved raise amounts at an earlier meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine. I, I was just curious because there's some things that are, like, linked here to view and others not, and so I, I personally don't feel comfortable saying yes to anything that I don't see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything that's not linked in there, they view prior.
Okay.
But if there's ever anything that you wanna see or see a, like, different level of detail of, you can just request it. I'll link it in or send it to you.
Okay.
So you sign it again? I think I made a motion to have it.
Alright, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't want to skip over. You abstain because I don't feel like I can, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to abstain. But I would prefer to abstain from voting since I haven't seen the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, then moving on to our Wilma, Wilma cooperative agreement revision.
So this is the agreement that you saw last month, uh, but my, the contract actually said in eighty-twenty split with Wilma High School, my words at the meeting were seventy-thirty, and so even though you signed the eighty-twenty documents, um, I really wanted it on record that we were, were splitting with Wilma, Wilma, it's been budgeted at an eighty-twenty split.
Can I get a motion made to correct our last month's contract? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then moving on to our first reading of our deal or policy.
Okay, so, um, this month, we, the board reviewed, actually last week, all of the policies in volume thirty-one, number one. You can choose to do a first reading of that, and then we will do a second reading. You can do second reading and approval next month. You can choose to approve the first reading, or waive the first reading and approve the policy this month. Uh, that's completely up to you. We'll say, I think, Karen and Katie were at the, the policy review session. This group of policies, um, wasn't particularly lengthy, which is appreciated. Uh, nor were there, uh, a lot of language change, a lot of technical corrections. So I would say of, not that all policies aren't interesting to the board, uh, but the level of interest in this particular focus floor.
I'm, we waived the first reading and approved the second. That's how we look at it.
So move. For second, I guess.
Alright, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Kim, this time I'm jumping ahead again. Any opposed? Alright, then moving on to principal report.
Alright, um, Kelly asked that we share out a little bit with, uh, regard to our plan for welcoming our new fourth grade students into B M S next year. Um, I think Brookwood is awesome, and, but one thing that's really unique about our district is the breakdown in the grades that we have in both buildings. Um, I know from a parental standpoint, I would imagine, just as a mom, it would be a little nerve-wracking to have your fourth grade student coming in knowing that they're gonna be learning alongside eighth graders. Um, so I think it's really important that, you know, we make that as smooth of a transition as possible for students, for families, for teachers, for everybody involved. Um, we were lucky today to be able to meet again with our third grade teachers, fourth grade teachers, and fifth grade teachers, and really put our heads together and discuss how are we going to make sure that, um, you know, this is as smooth of a transition as possible so that everybody is feeling comfortable and prepared. Um, so just to give you kind of some bullet points of our plan, May is gonna be a big month for us. Um, we're gonna start with our special education students. They're gonna be coming up separately on May fourth for about an hour, hour and a half, to have their own separate tour of B M S. Um, they're going to have lunch and recess with us as well. Um, that was really important to, um, our special education teachers especially, because the kids are in that, that one-on-one, um, where we can really give them personal attention before we bring all of the kids up, um, later on. The following day, on May fifth, um, our fourth grade teachers are actually going to go down to V E S and meet with each of the third grade classes just to introduce themselves, answer any quick questions that kids might have, and then also invite them and kind of foreshadow that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing some fun stuff in the coming weeks. Uh, so, you know, you're getting to come up to B M S and kind of get the lay of the land here and ask whatever questions you might have. So that will be taking place on May fifth. Then on Friday, May thirteenth, yes, Friday the thirteenth, we are going to bring our third grade students up to B M S. Um, they're going to do a tour of the building. Um, then I will be able to introduce myself to them as well at that point, as well as, um, do some introductions with our related arts teachers.
We've had in place in the past and either had to change our practices, um, or things that we've used at different grade levels that we experienced a lot of success with. Um, a- as we're looking forward to this next one, um, May eighteenth is another one that, um, it, it mimics a pilot we did a few years ago, um, with conferences. And when we did that, it allowed parents to come in and ask questions with regard to, um, the, the, the testing data and things like that. A lot of the things that as educators were, it's second nature to us, but families, not so much. So we said, that was a, a great educational opportunity for parents. How do we build that into the transition and have them feel, um, as, as parents, to be able to talk with their children about what's going on in this, in the school and being, um, on that level of understanding for that.
So, um, that brings us to Wednesday, May eighteenth, which is shortly after our, about five days after the third graders come up here to do their quick tour and lunch and recess with our B M S students. Um, we're gonna have a fourth grade parent academy night, so that'll be the opportunity to bring parents in, give them a tour of the building, um, put together a presentation. My plan is really to reach out to some parents right out of the gate and say, what's on your mind? Like, what are you thinking about? What do you need clarified? Um, put together a, a quick presentation. Um, and then, of course, uh, leave plenty of time for just a Q and A session where parents can kind of, um, rapid-fire, come up with whatever's on their mind. If they can't answer their question in a moment, then hopefully we'll be able to get back to them, um, at a reasonable time. Uh, we are going to be able to have our leadership students help with babysitting, so we hope that that will not be a barrier for parents to be able to come in. Um, and ultimately just to feel more comfortable and ask whatever might be on their mind, um, so that we can address those questions, so everybody's feeling comfortable moving forward. And then, um, the most exciting day, I know Miss Cantak is probably most excited for this one. Um, the next day, which is Thursday, May nineteenth, our third graders will be coming up for a shadow day where they're really going to, um, we're gonna divide them up and they're gonna sit in, in one of our, uh, four or five classrooms for the morning. They'll have lunch and recess again with the fourth and fifth graders, but then in the afternoon, they get to see the Willie Monka play. Um, and, uh, we decided as a team, it would be more exciting for them to be able to sit with, as opposed to coming up with the first, second, and third graders, which was the original plan, to give, use that as another opportunity where they can sit with the fourth and the fifth graders to view the show, just as like one more, you know, kind of icebreaker type experience, um, to get them intermingling with the kids.
So in the past, it's always been the elementary that would come up, and this is just a great opportunity. The elementary's still coming up with the, the young, up to second grade, uh, coming up in the morning for the presentation. Uh, the third graders will come with, and that's when they'll be with the fourth grade, allowed to have a little bit more time up here and get more used to it, more comfortable to the elementary to make that transition easier. So an opportunity to just spend a little bit more time and ease those tensions.
And lastly, and this is something that I will mention when we have our parents in for our, uh, fourth grade academy, uh, parent night, is I, I am really interested in offering a more, a more personalized approach as well. So, um, anybody who wants to meet with me in the summertime, um, to discuss their particular student, um, I'll be offering that up as well for parents who, you know, prefer to speak in more of a one-on-one thing. So that is what we have on the docket.
I could say as a parent, like, I enjoyed when my oldest came up here, having that parent night, to understand and know exactly what she was talking about. That, you know, that way, we were both on the same page. But I liked that you were bringing that back.
And, and that was a part of the conversation that we, that we had is it's, both of those aspects are important so that the kids have that anxiety levels coming down, but also the parents have the information because they're used to doing things a certain way that we do it at the elementary. They're, they're comfortable after third grade. They don't always remember how uneasy they were when their children were dropped off as four K, but by the time they got to third grade, oh, we're, we're experts, the kids are experts, the parents are. And this is just another one of those transitions, much like we see with our eighth graders going off to high school. So just being cognizant and aware of those larger transitions, and after the year gets going, things are better, and you know, that you might forget after a few years of being comfortable that how uneasy it was. Change is difficult, so we wanna do everything that we can to make sure that we support our families and our students going through those changes. I think multiple days of having them up here will, will definitely be better as well, so I like it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have for our principal report. Well, thank you. Alright, then on to Helen.
Um, so first off, thank you tonight for having me. Um, there's a new camera in place, and it's being very funny tonight, as you guys can tell. So thanks for your patience with the recording and the camera, too. Um, so I know I had come to previous board meetings and talked about the other things that I do within the district that were outside of tech. And so tonight, I'm coming to talk to you guys in regards to technology for our school district. Um, there are three main topics I'm gonna talk to you guys about tonight. One is about our one-to-one devices security and support in regards to students and staff. Um, another one is going to be parent resources that we've offered to our parents in our community. And the last one is, um, about district security. I left the beefier one for last because it's a little bit more in-depth, um, some of that work that I've been doing. So, um, Kelly's put up our presentation, um, very basic, brief, guys. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is security features on district-issued devices. So, um, in both buildings, we're one-to-one, and we've been fortunate enough, we've been like that for many years. At our elementary school, they're fully iPads. Here at the middle school, our Chromebooks. Uh, we have computer labs in both buildings, and currently, um, at the middle school, we do have some iPads. Um, in the past, we've had a mix of iPads and Chromebooks. iPads up here are really sunsetting, um, Kelly using that term, like, that it's, it's going away. We do keep a couple carts up here, um, for photography, for art. Um, Mr. Graham Han uses iPads in some of his tech classes, so we know that we will keep those in place, and it's kind of a nice in-between transition because the kids at elementary are used to the iPads. There's still some of that use up here. And all of the security that I'm gonna talk about are used in both buildings interchangeably, no matter what device students are using. So, next slide, Kelly. So the first thing I wanna touch base is, um, our district is Google, Google for Education School. So all of our accounts are housed through Google. So, um, once we get a incoming student, we make an account. Um, those accounts are filtered by something called an OU, so it's an organizational unit. So when students come in, we put them in the grade level, really the year they're graduating from Brookwood, and then in those student OU's, it's filtered and locked in. So students really can only email one another. It's gotta be through a G C J two email to send and receive. Um, all staff accounts are open-filtered, so, you know, you can email whether it's G C J two or not, but even specifically, they can only send and receive emails through G C J two accounts. Next slide. So we've gone with the, um, program called Securely, and it, they all kind of filter within one another, but they're all standalone. So Google actually owns YouTube. That's been a big concern of some of our families in regards to how YouTube is being filtered. So YouTube with Google and Securely, it's an overarching, so Google's owned by YouTube, or Google owns YouTube. There are different classifications for YouTube. There's YouTube Kids and YouTube, you know, regular YouTube. Ours is filtered as a YouTube education. So as videos are made in YouTube, YouTube itself flags if things are education or not. There are going to be things that fall through those filters just because of how quickly videos are being uploaded and made in YouTube. Um, the catch is actually good. We also partner with this company that we, um, have bought into for a couple of years now called Securely. So Securely started in twenty thirteen, and their biggest intention is keep kids safe. So if you even look up and just Google "education filtering for school", there'll, there's a bajillion. And so you think, okay, how does the district decide? How do you decide which one you go with? Because there's a lot of different ones. There's some that are only about certain trends and certain aspects of technology, but our biggest one was keeping kids safe and ensuring that we're able to monitor and filter what kids are on and that it works coincidentally with Google because that's our biggest tool, tool that we use as a district. Um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit more about how Securely works if you go to the next slide, Kelly. So, um, it's cloud-based filtering, so everything is through their G C J two account. So, um, the messages I send out, you know, like when we shut down devices over break, it's all through their G C J two account. So that's the part that works simultaneously in regards to how filtering works. So regardless if you're on iPad, a Chromebook, a desktop computer here at school, the first prompt when they go to Safari, Chrome, any type of web browser, is who are you? Students log in with their G C J two accounts, and then that grants whatever kind of access that user gets. So some of the questions have been, well, what if Johnny logs in as Suzie and logs in as so-and-so on their district-issued device? Well, whoever's logged into that account, that's who it gets flagged for. So that's the part when we talk to students and teachers about talking about using safe passwords, not sharing your passwords. Like, it doesn't really matter who has whose Chromebook. It matters who has that account and who's logging in and who's typing in that information. Um, it's a good learning point for our middle schoolers, too, because I've had middle schoolers email me and be like, Ms. Jean, please change my password, like, someone don't knows it, or someone knows my password, please just change it. And so that they know that they really can't be sharing their passwords with one another because those passwords are generated by us, we can reset it. So this cloud filtering, um, what happens is, you know, there are already restrictions put in place. So like gambling, porn, things like that are already blocked out of all student accounts and things like that. But other things that happen is like if a student looks up knife, um, which is, you know, an unsafe word in an educational setting, it autofilters, sends emails to either Luke or Tori, depending on building and depending on OU, and then they take action on deciding, okay, is this mine or does it go to the school counselor? Who else needs to be looped into it? And it's instant, so within a minute of the student searching, it flags, alerts, um, the administrators, then administrators can take action for that. Um, so this is a view of, um, a semi-part of the tech side of what we see. So if you look along this side, um, you can actually search for a specific user. So I could type in Owen's email, and it would tell me everything that he went on Chrome Safari. So I've had it a little different because there are apps. Um, it doesn't keep track of what app a student goes on, but it keeps track of any type of like, um, internet search or Google search or a search that would auto-filter, that would require them to log in. For the Chromebooks, it's a little more, um, granular because as soon as you open a Chromebook, you gotta log in right away. And really, everything is Chrome-based on, on, um, a Chromebook. So everything really gets filtered completely when students use Chromebooks. But as you can tell, like, you can do recent video searches, social posts. We actually have social media shut off for students on all of our district devices. But you can tell, like, this student on three, um, twenty-nine at nine fifty-four, they went on this website. Uh, on my side, I think this is like the quick, like, easy way to block it. But and then what we do is when we see trends, um, of students going to new websites that are not, like, educationally appropriate, you can quick-block, but we can go into the OU and block it for a whole group of kids. Um, we see this a lot with gaming, so a lot of kids will go on tons of gaming websites and do those clicking cookie games or whatever. You know, no matter what, if you cat and mouse game, I can't, I could literally sit for a whole week, all day, eight hours at my computer and just block all the games the kids are on. So I think that's the part that's that educational piece. If I see something trending, I'll let those grade-level teachers know. Grade-level teachers will ask me to look up certain kids, and then we have those. Grade level teachers will ask me to look up certain kids and then we have this conversation. So it's, um, a nice piece when you're looking for something specific with students. So how Auditor works is this is another piece of, um, the filtering. So the filtering that you just saw before is specific to website searches, Um, anything that's really searched on, on Chrome or Safari or anything like that. But Auditor, what this entails is email. So we know that on district devices, students know they can email one another. Um, a lot of kids might not have cell phones to be able to text one another. So this is their source of connecting with one another. So we have had, um, Auditor flag emails where students are exchanging emails with one another and saying, I don't feel safe. That flags it straight to administrator. Oh, and think flags like last night, something really bad happened. I feel like I need to hurt myself. We've seen those emails come through. Principals get those emails and then they take action. Um, over one of the holiday breaks. So during holiday breaks, um, I watch over Auditor reports. So that's kind of the action of why I've gone through holidays where we're shutting devices down without parent consent. If parents reach out and say, I really need this so that my child can catch up on work. We will open that up. We do ask parents to confirm that they're gonna make sure their student is doing work. Um, because once I open that, those are students I keep track of too. So, you know, over holidays, I'm watching for reports to come in. Um, the reason I took action on most recently doing this shutdown over longer breaks Is because I, in my position, don't know students as well as Luke and Tori do. Students don't know me in the capacity of when I was a classroom teacher. So over break, um, a few years ago, I did have a student look up how to tie in news. And just that takes a lot of action where I am not contacting them because it's holiday break. I take the first action and call home and check in with the student and make sure it was okay. If I couldn't get ahold of a parent, do I have a police officer go out to the house? So you know, it's that part of, I know I need to know that that, that child is safe, but I got that alert and it's a holiday. So, um, that's kind of taken action on why, why I've moved in some of the places that I have in regards to holiday breaks. So, but Auditor's a great tool in regards to specific emails and student contact like that. So the other side outside of, um, the student portion of it is, um, Securely has something called Classroom. And this has been very helpful for teachers because in the beginning when we had Securely, Securely was quite new. Um, so they were building out their programming. Classroom came out probably about a year and a half ago, just after COVID. So it would have been nice if during COVID we had it. Because this allows teachers, um, specifically up here at the middle school because they're use Google Classroom, To actually see what students are actively doing on their Chromebooks. Teachers, um, we haven't said where it's only done during school hours. So as the tech department, because you know, you wouldn't do something when they're off school time. Um, at the elementary school, they have something on iPads, but students don't take those devices home, so it's easier to just track there. With Chromebooks and, um, Classroom, as long as the teacher has those students in a Google Classroom, Teachers can bring up a screen and it brings up every single monitor that's actively in their Google Classroom. It allows teachers to, um, lock a screen, close a screen, send a message, send a pain. So like if you have three kids gaming, you can just like close them all out right there. You can also direct specific websites. So let's say they're on Scholastic website. I can push Scholastic website and lock that into each student on their Chromebook. So feedback I've gotten to, um, from teachers is it's been very helpful, especially When kids have 10 clicks and they're really good at tapping over to their next screen when a teacher is walking by. So, um, it's been a very helpful tool for our middle school teachers.
Like next age classroom management.
So something else I wanted to touch on is because, um, In tech, we want to also make sure we're informing our parents and supporting our community as well with what we've been moving forward. So, um, there's a couple things. So Joe DeFor is the owner of New Line Technology. He is actually the company, oh, New Line is the company that I third-party for tech support. Um, a couple days a week to help me with tickets, servers, the things that I am not knowledgeable on. They support and then we work together on things to move our district forward. And so Joe, one night, um, did a parent presentation with me in regards to support for parents In regards to like tech at home. Um, I, I like using someone that's outside because I would like our community and parents to see me as the advocate for our school. And to know like, I can only do so much. If things are being done at home and it's social media at home and it's during home time, I really don't have means to like do anything about it. If it's stuck here and on our district devices, that's my job. So Joe, um, was a really great resource that night that he did the presentation. And then next slide, Kelly. Um, I'm also thankful for PSD. So this was on April 6th. PSD had actually done a parent presentation night that, um, Luke and Tori and Julia were a part of To have, um, some support for parents about social media at home. Because that's overwhelming in itself and they see us as tech leaders. But a lot of that social media stuff at home, we really can't do a lot about. And supportive of, um, Genoza City Police Department, Officer Babard also came to our parent night to kind of support that if parents had Washington. So it's great to have all the support and, um, things for our parents about technology. Okay, so last piece, I told you this is like the new year part, so I'm sorry. You guys know when I come, I talk a lot. So, um, cybersecurity is, um, a huge Bomb, pretty much, in the educational world right now. So it's not, hasn't really been talked about before, but now it's become where these hackers know That schools are places that have money and can find money And have a lot of very private information that needs to be kept locked down. So if you haven't heard, um, Black, Black River Falls just recently shut down because of a cybersecurity hack. They don't know what to do or how to do it. They just literally just shut down because they were afraid to even move forward. This happened, I think, just about a week and a half ago. Um, Mina had shut down about, I think, a month, month and a half ago for a few days because they had this hack, didn't know what to do. Um, the biggest one that's still kind of under wraps and I don't know like, I know I'm recording, but how much I can talk about it because it's still under investigation, Is, um, the shutdown at Janesville. So Janesville School District is still under investigation. The hack happened in October. They actually had it back to that October and December. They're estimating right now that insurance is going to have to pay at least a minimum of $4 million. Um, because right now it's at a point where they know that these hackers got in their system, so their student information system. And they're having to do credit checks on every single person in their student information system. Because they don't know if they got into financial records. Because you think you pay school lunch accounts, credit cards are connected to student billing, all those different things. They're also having to look into the vendor reports of, um, what their business office uses. So they know that this rate is climbing and so hackers over time look for information. So, you know, this is some information I want to share with you guys because it's become very relevant. Um, just within the last few months, I've had a ton of pieces. What I'm doing and what we've done in regards to that. So thanks, Kelly. So what's in the news is about those schools, school close downs. Um, you think of those schools as bigger schools? Do you think, oh, we're a smaller school district, are we safe? Really no, because, um, yeah, their first go-to are those big ones because they know they have the financial means. Eventually it's going to come to these smaller ones because they're going to know that these bigger school districts have the money. Um, they have the infrastructure to pay for all these things to keep things locked down and, and, and closed off. So the next step is what are we going to do? So the first thing you might ask, okay, how are these, how are these people getting in and hacking into the school systems to figure out these things? So the biggest piece are end users and end users are anyone with a school email account. So it could be any of you guys. It could be a student, it could be a staff member. And so the biggest piece of this is the educational piece to it. And that's what we've really been working on. And I think a lot of times you think, oh, you think of it as, well, it can't, it won't be me. Or if it happens, it's on the school. And, and that's not the way we have to look at it. We have to look at it as it could happen to your school account, it could happen to your personal account. So, um, through the end users, a lot of times it's through emails. Um, it can be through links in an email, it can be links through a website. So there's a lot of different ways that it can come in. Um, we've seen as a district ourselves, a lot of phishing emails. So what phishing is, they're fake emails pretending to be someone else. Um, in our smaller southeast tech group, which is like Walworth, Janesville, Whitewater, Like we get together pretty often and we're constantly like messaging one another about stuff. But we, I've seen where like, um, Like the business manager gets an email from a fake superintendent saying that they need their bank account changed. Or, um, a principal sending out an email, fake principal sending out an email. It looks like the real principal asking for help. Um, and they need to buy 10, um, Apple gift cards and, and people do it. Because they think, oh, shoot, this is my loss, I need to do this, they're asking me to do this. You just think, you just help them. You know, like that's your role is to, to listen to what you're being told and you just do it. And a lot of schools and people have done this. Even in our closer area schools, um, you'd be surprised, but you know, we don't share all those private stories out About what's happening in the other schools, but, um, it's really shocking. But the biggest piece of this phishing piece is that it's literally two clicks. And what happens is they get you to click that second click and then they get into your school email account and they just sit. They just sit over time, over months, and then they find out, oh, this person's a little more high-ranking, this is their way to get them to click this. They get them to click that and then they finally get to business manager and they are able to track how many funds does this school have? Who is their insurance through? Who is, what is all this information? Then that's when they take action and they decide, okay, how much are we going to ask for ransomware? Shut down all the servers and phone lines. And then schools then have to decide, are you going to pay the ransom? Or how much will insurance pay out or what's going to happen? And so it's really interesting because, um, over this time of this huge spike in cybersecurity hacks, Um, I've, we've been meeting with DPI. Ed Snow at DPI is one of my really good friends. And so I asked him the kind of questions and I talked a lot with him too. And he's, and I said, how often do school districts just pay that we just don't know about? And he's like, a lot more than you think. Because they know, cyber hackers know how much a school is willing to pay To get all your information because you're, you need to get back online right away. You need your stuff. And I said, well, that's kind of dumb because if they know that you'll pay and they know how to get in, what's the next step? And so when these things happen, um, it's interesting because now there's this huge team. Um, when you get hacked or something like this happens, The first people you call is the National Guard, they come in right away. Then they call the FBI and then you call your insurance company. And these three groups come in and they take everything over. Um, and depending on your infrastructure and what's happening and what's gotten happened into, It could take, you know, 12 hours and they can get you back up running. But there are school districts that were shut down for a week because They could, the phone lines, everything's connected through internet. So you don't want to open something up until you know how they got in and what they're looking at and what they're kind of creeping on for your school district. So next slide, please. So when you hear these words, threat, threats, hacked and ransomware, those are kind of things that you hear around these school districts. Um, like detailed information doesn't come out about all of the things that are happening Because FBI will continuously be involved in it, so it's high-security information that they don't give out. Like you think Janesville, that happened in October. And even as the tech people that are kind of around it, that's all we've heard. That right now it's sitting at $4 million for insurance to pay out. And so, and that will continue to climb, uh, because they're having to pay FBI. The National Guard piece right now is free, they're doing some training and stuff like that. And I signed up for us for next school year, once we kind of get better moving on some of the steps that we need to take as a district. So it's just interesting, all of it. Next slide. So you think, oh, well, there is cybersecurity insurance, our school district has it. Um, but where is the future of cybersecurity insurance? So DPI and, um, National Guard and insurance companies at our meetings are telling us that it is going to go away. Um, because of the hacks and the threats that have happened, the payout for insurance, kind of, they can't keep up With how much you're paying into the insurance and how much they're having to pay out. So, you know, they're, they're telling school districts to be aware that, you know, right now it's still in place. But over the next two, three years, it will be going away. But right now, um, insurance companies have kind of upped in order to, um, renew your cybersecurity insurance. There's different steps. And the, the group of tech people that I'm with is interesting because all of us have different requirements. So, um, Edgerton, um, Director of Technology, James Hask, really close with him. He has a 10-page document that he needs to hit yes on everything in each of the boxes to be considered for renewal. And, you know, bigger school districts, more requirements and things like that. For us, we've reached out to our insurance company a few times just to make sure. Because they said, if they're having 10-page documents, like I need to make sure that we're set for our renewal. And right now ours is, um, next slide, Kelly. Is to ensure that, um, MFA, so multi-factor authentication. So what that means is typically when you sign into Google, you just type in your email and then your password. Multi-factor means there's multiple factors or ways that you have to Use or do in order to get into that email. It's not just the one-time password you're going in. So for our administrative team, a lot of us, you'll see these, um, keys on the side of our computers. We've done training on it as an administrative team Where, um, when you log into your Google account, you tap it and it puts in a code So that it authenticates that it's you on, on your computer. Which is like, okay, like it's on your computer, like of course we have to make sure your computer is closed, like, you know, there's different things. You can also set up, um, MFA through your cell phone, so it can send you a text for a code and different things like that. We've put out educational pieces, um, to staff and I've talked with staff in regards to this Because in July, it's going to be a requirement for all of our adult end users to have MFA set up, which is something new for our staff. So I have another email coming out, but we're, but at the end of the school year, once school's let out, It's going to become a requirement where all of our Google accounts will have MFA set up. So that our insurance will be renewed and we'll, we'll be fine. And so the next renewal to see what else changes. And it's changing so fast, you know, like, like we know tech moves so fast. This is as well, but this is something that we ensure that will be set up, um, for our renewal. The next thing is a cyber incident plan and team. So I've been going to CISA, um, to work on this. This is something that we don't have in place yet. Um, so what happens is it's pretty much like an emergency plan. If this happens, these are the steps that you do, these are the things you follow, these are the people you call. These are the people that are sitting in the room with FBI and the National Guard To work on figuring out what is the next step and where do we move forward in that. So that's what I'm currently working on, um, with Kelly, the cyber incident planning team. And the biggest thing is just ensuring that everything is always updated. Um, that's one of the things that allow, um, security threats to come in is, um, your infrastructure itself. The things that you're using are not updated. Because a lot of times when you have an update to a program, There are security keys that are in the background with it to ensure that, you know, things are kept updated and safe. And then backups. So, um, as a school district, we do do regular backups to our business office, um, to ensure that those pieces. But we're also looking at like our PowerSchool, our system. So there's something called a cold backup where it backs up and then it's taken off, like off, offline. So that if it ends up you get hit and they can say, okay, the pinpoint is this date, you can go back to this cold backup And restore from that cold backup, so you can get your system up and running faster. So, um, overall cybersecurity, um, I put the "and" at the bottom because it's, it will be ever-changing And, you know, trying to stay ahead of that game. And hopefully we'll never have to use our incident plan or our team that will stay ahead. Um, but I just wanted the school board to be aware of kind of these, these threats and things out there with technology Because, um, they're expensive and there's things that we will be required to do, that we'll need to do To ensure that we're staying up with technology the way that we are.
Helen, you talked about that, that third party that you use. Do we have like a third-party infrastructure for cybersecurity or no?
No, really, uh, I didn't record what I did. Um, the great thing about using New Line is that New Line not only services us as a smaller school, there's a couple surrounding smaller schools, But they're heavily based in MPS and Milwaukee area. So they usually hear a lot of stuff and they're, they're honesty to me Because we've been with them for so long and their workers is very clear and helpful. So, you know, when these kind of things happen, um, and right now DPI, the governor just signed it like, um, I don't know how much it is, but there's this other wave of money that's going to go straight to cybersecurity. When we met with Ed Snow at our last DPI meeting, um, he said, I need to hear from you tech people, like what do you want? How, how do we use? How, how do we use this money to help schools? And so it's been interesting because we've had different kinds of waves of money in tech. And one way it was set up, it was kind of set up like a menu option where you could, you could ask for certain things. So we used it for some of our subscription stuff. We used these at elementary school. It was a good way for me to use a chunk of money that was being provided by the state and not have to pay it out of our budget. And so when we met with Ed, I said, you know, all school districts are at different points with cybersecurity. If a school's already been hacked, they're way beyond and know what they need to do. A smaller school like us, we probably won't do the amount of work that a bigger school has done that's been hacked. So Ed right now is working with the state and DPI to put kind of a menu of things together. Where I see like our next step is the biggest piece that the DPI thing that they're seeing school districts hit is through phishing emails. It's really not like going on websites and things like that. They're very strategic with trying to find an end user, like an adult user that will click on something that will let them into their email. And so when I'm talking to like Elkhorn and like Geneva and Fordak and those are kind of my people. And they're really helpful. They said they pay for like to fish their staff. Where it's like once a month or twice a month, they'll send a fake email and it'll be like $15, $15 Target card. Congratulations from, you know, Target for being with us and teacher. And then it keeps track of the percentage of teachers that actually click on it. And you know, I brought this up to staff a couple of years ago and they all looked at me like I was crazy, like, you're going to do that to us? And they said, well, I'm just letting you guys know, like, schools are paying to do this because they know that this is happening. And so, you know, I've, I've been researching a lot of insurance companies. Their second round is you need to have something in place in regards to training and supporting like how you're keeping staff safe. Randy at Elkhorn said their click rate was, has dropped significantly. So in the beginning, when they started doing the phishing, it was like 97, 98%. Everyone was just clicking everything. And in this last couple of years and with COVID and everything, because there's even more with COVID, like, you know, by the, the matter, whatever. His click rate has dropped to like, I think he said like 6% or 7%. Well, around tax time, he sent out a fake one about W2s. Click rate jumped up to 90% again, just from that one phishing email. So I think that's the piece about the educational piece and re-talking to staff and re-talk, like, you know, reworking the staff. So you know, the two pieces that I've heard from insurance companies that are going to be like a bigger requirement is the professional development and the training and then also what you have in place to keep your training ongoing. And so now a lot of these companies are offering these paid things for school districts to pay per user to do these things. And that's kind of where I see a lot of this change going.
I'm glad you're so honorable.
I, I do my best. It really is changing so rapidly and I'm thankful for the people I've connected with in my department because this is like, I'm glad they probably won't watch this recording, but they're like the hardcore like tech people. You know what I mean? Like the servers, the cables, like the end user stuff, the way they code stuff. I don't, I, I'm not super knowledgeable on those things, but they keep me in the loop because of our relationships that we've made. And they're like, Helen, watch out for this. They'll send me emails and things like that. So it's helpful to be in this group of people that are so knowledgeable and so into it. And that when we all meet and talk, they share all of their experiences with it.
That's a whole lot of information.
Helen, could you repeat that?
I know you guys love, love me coming to talk to you guys, so we're sorry.
Makes me think Ferris Bueller was a jerk. Happening with the height of the high school.
You're never going to like that movie again.
I won't. Look at it differently.
Then moving on to business manager reports. I have your report for you tonight. All right, we're moving on to superintendent.
We've got a handful of different things. This is National Volunteer Week. And so we are kind of have a call to action this week. We've got 71 volunteers needed for the upcoming fun fair on May 13th. We're hoping to fill 50% of those volunteer spots over the course of this week. So happy to take signups for the games or the dump tank.
I signed up all for the dump tank.
Listen, I just got pie in the face for two hours. I don't know what I need to sit in a dump tank.
You're brave. Children will enjoy it, I believe.
Is it for the kids, Luke? I'll do it. I don't do it.
There's one volunteer. So we want to continue to kind of cock it up with our, our families. I think too, National Volunteer Week, it's, it's good to recognize that we've got a core group of our, our parents that have been really carrying the activities of the VFO on their shoulders through the COVID and beyond this year. And want to make sure that they also have time during fun fair time to enjoy some of that evening with their families. So many hands, things like work. Hopefully that will be the, the case for the fun fair. Also started talking with staff at last week in my staff message. We try to go at 100% or pretty darn close for fun fair of staff participation. It's, it's just a show of support for the VFO and all the things that they do over the course of the year. Something that we've done, but we used to do the fun fair many years ago. So hopefully that will also be the case. And the, the dump tank is, you know, it's hard to even, we've got so many volunteers, you know, from staff for the dump tank. That's a good way to be involved in that. Last week at the village board meeting, the village made a resolution to have a voluntary no-mow-may to increase the amount of pollinators in the, the grass, with the grass growing in May in residential lawns and lawns around the village to increase, increase the pollination. So I talked with Bill about this a little bit today. I don't know, for some of you that have been around for a while, we had an inadvertent no-mow-may out in our field a couple of years ago, several years ago now. So there are definitely pieces on our school site that will not be eligible for no-mow-may. We can't do it when there, where there are kids. But we're going to try to pick some spots that we also can participate in no-mow-may as a show of support for our village and for the environment as well. So if you see some of the edges getting a little bit straggly, not Bill's mowing, it's a part of no-mow-may.
I'll have to rethink that whole new mower thing.
I know. What a moment of sadness, right? Like this is the year we're going to do no-mow-may.
Nicole and I got word that our insurance increase for this year is going to be at seven and a half percent. While that is a little bit more than it has been other years, we were hoping it was not going, we thought it might be up between 12 and 15. So to get seven and a half, we're very, very excited about that. Moving forward. Summer school booklets are on your tables. So we started the, the summer school, sign up for classes. Working with the virtual academic coaching and the academic jump start in August as well. So got some registrations coming in and hopefully we'll be filling those June classes specifically. Our UW Whitewater sent out a request of districts in the area to be partners with them in some grant, a grant process. So they're trying to attract new people to the teaching profession and almost create not a hotline, but a, a direct path from the high schools right into the field and getting some grant minds to support that. Obviously, we don't have the, we don't have the high school kids in eighth grade, even for the best of them, so they're young to move and write to the teaching profession. But we are hooked in with them. I talked to Robert Fox, who's their lead, about being a placement site. So they have districts that are interested in providing the students, that are looking for peak places to put those students. We could be a placement site and they're also, we're also looking for some people to be maybe on that board. So Mary Ellen is going to be kind of our point of contact on that programming. That, you know, supporting young educators in the profession is a no passion project. In fact, I signed her up and sent her the email, would you like to do this almost in front of me? I think it, I think it's exciting work. They actually, the, the first grant that they were going to pursue was about English language learners and helping teachers who are in the profession, in the field, get that bilingual or EL certification, which that's also a need for us. They've moved on to this other grant, but I really think it's, this is today. So you should get the newest episode or newest edition of the, you know, they use in your mailbox this next week. Hopefully Katie, you will get one in your mailbox.
It's always a gamble.
It's always a gamble. So it's a handful of, of stuff. You can really feel the, the calendar start to fill in in this spring of the year.
All right, then moving on to board members' reports are coming.
Thank you Helen. That was an excellent in-depth report. It really helped us all to associate what we're hearing in the news with what is being done here. Because when I started here, I think I did it, it was my thought to ask you about these things. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that today.
I went to the, well, Carrie was there and Tori for the PSG night the other day. Helen, there was a little panic when you weren't there.
I called in.
Yep, everyone.
Wanted you guys.
Was a little concerned things were going to be up and running. But it was like, I don't use Snapchat, Instagram, just like, to sort of understand kind of where to look for my own scans and how to navigate that, I felt was important. And then we went home and as Carrie said, now everybody was off of everything and.
She said it was very frightening, actually.
It really was.
Hearing that information, knowing how much my two teenage daughters are on social media.
Frightening but enlightening, you know, like.
Even like the little code words. It was like, oh, yeah.
Like all the little acronyms that they use to try to be sneaky, but now we know what they mean. So, yeah, they'll make me one.
I was going to say they're just going to change it.
I know.
You know, like it was.
But not to know like where to look or what to even, like I didn't know you can't screenshot Snapchat and tell that person? It's like, oh, I was having one of my kids do it to their dad. So when I learned, he figured that out. We moved on to new techniques. But it was just interesting because you don't know and it's not something we're taught. I mean, this wasn't in our wheelhouse as a kid. So I really enjoyed that. Anything else?
I got nothing.
All right then. Moving on to our next few board meetings, which will be our superintendent application review, April 19th. Semi-finalist interview, April 16th, 17th, or no, I'm sorry, 26th, 27th.
What, what time is that meeting tomorrow?
Six o'clock here.
We have a special meeting on 5/3. 5/2 on here, it says. Sorry. I was reading, I was reading down. Final interview, May 4th. Special board meeting, May 10th and our regular meeting on May 16th.
Yeah, note, no work session this June, the month of May.
I, I hope to be here. I know, I just heard that there's a bunch of travel coming up. I could be in the fine state of Iowa, Iowa, you know, as soon as I hear.
Anything for future agendas? Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you, everybody. We also have our bike ride on April 30th. Thank you. Thanks, Kim.